I'd like to call our meeting to order, I mean, our work session to order. Today is Tuesday, May 3rd. Member, board members present in, in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Online, we have member Jacobs. Also in the boardroom at the desk, we have Dr. Bishop. And we have various support staff. We'd like to thank everyone for being here. So we'll open, we'll now go to item B on our list, which is Board Requests for Information. So we have two, let's see, this is from, oh, here it, mine's up now, thank you. All right, so our first item, let's see, was submitted by member Jacobs. Does the district have an audit plan? Member Jacobs will provide details of this ask. Member Jacobs, are you able to talk, to discuss the audit plan, your idea of the audit plan, your question, rather?
Yes, Madam President, I think this might have gotten resolved. I had a conversation with Mr. Anderson, and to the best of my knowledge, after our conversation, it sounds like we do not have one. And Mr. Anderson doesn't oppose the Finance Committee implementing a plan. And so I've had initial conversations with Finance Chair Lessons as to us examining what that might look like. And so I don't know that I need further information from the administration unless it sees value in submitting more information through the RFI process. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bishop, any comments?
No, we can actually share kind of the, the basis of the different types of business process reviews and audits that we've done thus far over the last six years, which would serve as a basis to understand what new information are redoing for the new superintendent to work with the board in that finance meeting. But a background of those we can share in the Board Connect and provide links to them.
Right, very good. So that one, we can move to Finance Committee. Is that correct? Member Lessons, you, okay. Thank you. Is there another one? Was that the only one? Oh, the certificated subs, okay.
And I've got one pending too.
Okay, one minute, I'll come right back to you. Request from member Holloman, he hasn't joined us yet, so maybe we'll go to you, member Donley, and come back since he's not here.
Yeah.
What did you have pending?
Well, mine, that's been around for months and months, that I'm grateful that it's partially addressed in the, the Goals Report that's going to be presented tonight. But my question was, over the past five school years, how many of our instructors have gotten unsatisfactory evaluations? And it's partially addressed in the report that's coming up tonight as how many teachers were asked not to reapply, or however you put it in that, you know, but it was for the, I think, a three-year period. I'm, but it's different how many actually were, you know, sought not to stay in employment versus how many received unsatisfactory evaluations. So I'm still really interested in that, and I think it's a really important measure. It's an objective measure towards that performance, towards that goal, our goal number three.
Thank you, that's good information. And we had done a study about four years ago, which was a different data pool, which is pretty significant, so we can keep this on the RFI and move it up. Because it was additional work that was outside of the guardrail, so we just wanted to know if the board's guardrail would answer that. It would be in addition to those that are listed because they didn't leave because, you know, they left because there was marks, you know, made on our unsatisfactory marks. So those are the ones that actually exited out of employment. But we did have a more extensive script written years ago to dig deep into the data. And so I would, we could just, the board, if you want to prioritize that, then we would turn it over to IT, because it came from the IT department last time we did that. Is that correct? Mr. Flackenstein?
Yeah. And Madam President, I think it's a really important data point, because there's a big distinction between how many people got unsatisfactory and how many were actually asked to leave. And I think it's an important distinction that we need the information about to draw conclusions about the, about the data that we're going to get tonight.
Currently, our bylaws require at least one other board member to want the same information. So can I get somebody to?
I'll second.
Okay. So with that, two board members are interested. We will move it up to Dr. Bishop, your input, short-term or immediate?
I'll defer to Mike Flackenstein, the employee who ran the, prior to this time, that ran that report and wrote the script. It would have to be changed because the system has changed, but he doesn't work for us anymore.
I still think it'd probably be pretty quick for us to get, so maybe in the next couple of weeks, if that's okay?
Okay.
Yep.
The member, Donley?
Yes.
That timeframe?
Thank you.
So if we can move that to, I'm sorry?
No, we'll just, I think we need to add it. It was a question that came directly to me, and I didn't know if the guardrail would answer that, but I think it's a deeper dive than the guardrail, as you mentioned.
We were waiting until we got the guardrail down. Okay, all right. Thank you. Let the record show that member Holloman has joined us in the boardroom. Alrighty, so our next one, and you're perfectly on time, member Holloman. We have the request. Is there a pay differential for building subs who hold an active teaching certificate? Now, some of the information regarding subs that we asked before, this is a little slightly different.
Madam President, we did answer that very quickly, and we were going to put it in Board Connect, but Matt Deeper can comment on it now.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the Board President, member Holloman, there is not a pay differential for short-term subs based on whether or not the substitute teacher has an active teaching credential. Where you would see some differentiation is that the majority, the vast majority of our long-term sub assignments are with personnel who, in many cases, are former teachers who have acting teaching certificates, and they do receive the higher pay rate. But again, those are for long-term assignments.
Member Holloman?
To clarify, what, what I wasn't clear on is someone who's a quote "building sub," who is showing up every day, but possibly to different assignments, are they being paid the same as someone who is, say, filling in for a teacher for three months?
Through the President to member Holloman, no, they are not. And the difference is, we added building subs to be that person that could, they might go on a day and sub for a teacher's aid. They might go for a day, when they show up, they could be anything from the office to a teacher. And so they're not engaged in the preparatory work that our teachers are engaged in to plan for a lesson, carry out a lesson, assess a lesson. So those long-term, higher salaried, or for certificated teachers that are subs that actually do that full circle of work that a teacher does. The benefit for the building subs are that they can have a job every day and just show up and not have, you know, they can enter when they enter and leave when they leave and not have that additional planning time and responsibility. So that's how we divided it. And again, the building sub was added as of recent last couple of years to assist with the uncertainty of substitutes during the pandemic. Yeah.
Any other questions? Does that answer, does that response answer your question, member Holloman? Any other questions, member Lessons?
This is less a request for information, but we, we have received a few of the guardrail reports, and I don't see a place where, like, on the outward-facing Board Goals and Guardrails page, I wonder if it would be possible to be able to publish the guardrail reports that have been printed?
Me, other than in Board Docs?
Yeah, like, to just click on the webpage. I mean, I can look at our board guardrails, and it would be interesting to just sort of have easy access to guardrail report number one, number two, number three. I mean, after they've been produced in accordance with our calendar, just to improve public transparency and understanding. Is that possible?
Let me go to Katie, and then Dr. Bishop.
They are posted when they're accepted on, on the agenda, like, this guardrail, once it's been provided to the board, will be approved at the next meeting or accepted. But we could probably post it both places if needed. Would it be the guardrails and the goals, or just the guardrail reports?
I think what she's saying is whatever report Dr. Bishop gives us in the beginning of the month, that it goes on our website somewhere. Next, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, in a way.
For easy access.
Yeah, I think it would be, we have, I don't know what the ultimate product would look like, but it seems like there would be value.
It's an easy asking, we can.
Showing the community, I mean, we send them out to the principals.
Yeah, right now, if you Google it, it'll take you to the Board Docs, but we could, we'll, we'll do it so it could take you to both places in case you don't know to go to Board Docs. It's easy.
Okay, so that's a new request and a solved one. All right. So not seeing any more. Board requests for information or clarifications on any of the ones we've talked about already? All right, so let's move on to our discussion part. C1, Board Policy 50-40. I know that Dr. Stock, Dr. Bishop, Dr. Stock has a report. Did you want to say anything before?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, that's a perfect segue. I was going to turn it over to Dr. Stock, as he is the administrative liaison to the Governance Committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and President Bellamy. So I thought it might help if we just started with a real brief, couple-minute history for, for those who haven't been here. The whole discussion, probably of all the board policies that we've had since I've been here, the one that seems to have lingered and had the most discussion and been around the barn several times is this Board Policy 50-40 on wellness and physical activity. And I would just want to give you a real brief history before we talk about a potential process for working on this policy. But it kind of started as far as a review of this policy in 2019. And some of you may remember that through a board member at the time, Mark Foster, proposed a, an board ad hoc group get-together and talk about this policy. There was a, that began this discussion, there were initial meetings, and I think I, from Melanie Sutton, our Coordinator of Health and Physical Education, who is probably the world's greatest note taker, she has given me her entire one-inch-thick folder on this group. And so I was going through, looking at the history, and I thought I'd just share. It started in February 7th of 2019 to review the current policy that's already in existence. There were at least 10 different meetings held over that time, and in the middle of that, you may remember, we took a little pause when we got a grant that came from Harvard, from the TH Chang School of Public Health, and we did a wellness study in the middle of the discussion. So we kind of stopped on the coordination of that board ad hoc committee, and we did the wellness policy. And so there was a group meeting clear up to there and coming up with draft documents. And then we did a presentation on March 3rd, 2020, to the school board, where we reviewed that wellness initiative. And then on Friday, March 13th, Governor Don Levy declared the closure of schools with COVID. And at that point, kind of everything went into hiatus. And we really didn't start working hard on that till we got to this spring. And of course, most of you know that then we also went through a superintendent search, and we were trying to keep schools open, and we had everybody who would work on these committees subbing in schools. And so here we are, kind of on the downside of that. So that's the history of why. And so what I would like to propose for your discussion tonight is just a potential process. I have talked to President Bellamy and also a member Lessons, who was on the original committee and has an interest in this topic. And I think, you know, my proposal, and maybe theirs too, I don't know, but my proposal would be that, starting in August, we would begin with a review of the last governance committee where we had proposed a revision to the style of the current policy, where it might have a briefer introduction, and then five separate ARs that were the details. The details are where administrators go to with the bullet points to tell them, this is what you're supposed to do, and here are the things that you need to make sure you have in place. And so we had presented sort of a draft of that, and then we stopped. And so what I would propose is that, starting in August, we would put together a board ad hoc committee, and as a discussion starter, I would recommend at minimum that we have two school board members, perhaps three from elementary, one of those being director, and Tim Andrew is here this evening, he was one of the folks that's been working behind the scenes to look at how elementary principals are interacting with this policy. And get two principals. If there was one thing that was probably a little not represented as well as could have been in the summertime, the last time this came up, is at that time, member, senior director Glenn Nielsen was the only elementary representative in those meetings, and he was in between jobs, and so we didn't get full elementary principal representation as to how this policy affects them. So we would probably make a more concerted effort to have some elementary principals on that group. A secondary director, and I'd recommend that be Marty Lang. Marty is the one that worked with student nutrition, worked on the Smart Snacks waiver, the federal rules that go along with the whole student nutrition aspect of Board Policy 50-40. Perhaps someone from mental health or health services, one of those. I would recommend we have two people from the health field itself, perhaps a teacher and perhaps Melanie Sutton herself, who's been probably the most knowledgeable about this. And then, under other, I would recommend at least someone from student nutrition who knows the federal rules on that, because there is a whole segment of student nutrition to this policy. And then others, as the board would, would dictate, I think, as to representation that you would like. So that's what I would say is a minimum membership. And what I'm proposing is that, once this group would really work through and create a draft, that that would be sent out to various parent groups. And the reason I say that is that, you know, I think Kerry Carpenter and Kelly Lessons were the two parent members at that time. But we probably didn't get full representation from a wide group of parents across the district. And I recommend that we, instead of just trying to put a whole bunch of parents on the committee, that we take the draft out and we get feedback with focus groups from various segments of the community about it. We could come back to the committee, make some tweaks, prepare a second draft based on feedback, and then really, the board's policy-writing process just kicks in. It goes to governance, then the three-member governance committee would wordsmith it to death and create, you know, what they actually want to propose to the full board for its actual policy. And that's pretty much it. The big part that really we need to do heavily is whatever this board passes really needs to be communicated very thoroughly to our principals, because one of the things that's happened over the years is, as administrators have come and gone and things have turned over, you know, the actual compliance to the current policy is, is weak at best, and it's actually written in such a long form that's hard for principals with a, you know, long narrative for them to sort out, what am I supposed to do now? And so I think there's some things we can do to straighten that up. So I'll stop with that. That's my brief review of a potential process. And I guess at this point, it would, it would go to the board as to what you wish administration to do about creating this policy.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stock. Member Lessons?
Sure, well, first of all, thank you, Dr. Stock, for your continued attention and collaboration, and thank you, Ms. Sutton, for your continued everything in this process. Both of you have been instrumental for a number of years, and I appreciate that. I think one question that I have, I really like the plan to move forward. There's an architecture, there's a narrative and a path forward. It reminds me of the process that the board went through this summer, you know, keep, delete, modify. I think it's important to bring this current board up to speed. And that the end product really is thoughtful and places students' needs academically, emotionally, behaviorally, physically, at the center of that product. And so I am hopeful for whatever comes of it. A couple of logistical questions that I have. One is if there's a creation of an ad hoc committee, is that something that needs to be voted on? And two, is there any ongoing collaboration with Dr. Cohen and the grant that she has received that I guess we would need to be aware of, that would interfere with a trajectory that we've, you know, that is outlined here, right? You know, sort of beginning work in August, continuing through the fall, coming up with something that could then be communicated in a timely manner for, for putting, for implementing in fall of '23? So is there any relationship with Dr. Cohen and her ongoing interest in partnering with ASD that we would need to be aware of?
Thank you, to member, member Lessons through the President. There is a current interview process that is underway through the grant, where they are doing focus interviews verbally by just calling individual principals who've been part of the wellness pilot, and just trying to understand what parts of the policy are they still implementing voluntarily as a result of that process. So we will have data come August that I think the committee can look at with regards to, we could also review the original research that was done on it, and also review then the current status is, there's two parts of the research Dr. Cohen's doing now, and we purposely scaled it way back from what I think she wanted, based on the fact that at the time, we were really struggling to keep schools open with subs and so on. So we asked her not to give out a big survey and so on, so she's just individually doing interviews through the UAA, actually. Students there are actually engaged in contributing and being paid to run that, those interviews. And the second part of that is she is collecting data from student nutrition that would be part of her research that might have some impact on this, but probably not as much as the wellness interview. So it should not interfere with the timeline, if that's the original question. Don't see anything in her research that would have anything to do with disturbing this.
Okay. And then President Bellamy, do you have thoughts on whether this would be, we should make, when member, when board member Mark Foster conceptualized an ad hoc wellness committee was something that the board at that point voted on? Is that something that we would need to take action in a similar way?
The president can appoint an ad hoc committee.
Excellent.
And so, and my question, any other questions from board members? On Dr. Stock, I love the plan. I think it's realistic, it's doable, and it allows for us to move forward. Oh, I see, member Jacobs, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I appreciate member Lessons for continuing to push forward on a full and inclusive revision of 50-40, and then Dr. Stock for, and Ms. Sutton for continuing to partner in the process. My, I guess I, I think I find value, especially when it comes to stakeholder input from the community and from staff who will be implementing the policy. And so I think that's, that's the big draw here for me. Member Lessons and I did do some initial work in governance over the past year to get the ball rolling on it. So I would be willing to, to serve on the ad hoc committee. You know, if there's others who want to participate, that's certainly fine, too, but I do like the process, and whether or not we vote on it, I'm willing to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
So, yes.
I just had one, at least one other thought. There is, the state of Alaska, as far as what we want to consider, you know, in this process, the state of Alaska does have a very helpful checklist for what should be included in a wellness policy. And so I think there are a number of guiding documents that we can, you know, we can look at prior work, certainly existing policy, but that checklist is a really great asset, because it also shows what is, in fact, federally required, so that we can be in compliance.
Okay, and I think that we would leave that up to the ad hoc committee to, to... So in terms of a date, I know it says to start in August, so 8/1, I'm just trying to get a timeline, if we can establish a timeline, and then look at the membership possibilities. I don't disagree with any of them. Now, is that mental health, mental health or health services? Is that our own internal?
Yes.
I know, member Lessons, you spoke to me about, I can't remember the name, Lauren something?
Oh, there is a, yes, so Lauren Kelsey, who is an employee of Department of Health and DHSS, and has been deeply involved at the state level with school wellness policies. She also signed the MOU that's coming up later tonight, and a non-action item between ASD and the state. She is a very knowledgeable individual when it comes to really understanding what needs to be in a policy. And so she's one stakeholder that I would find value in incorporating.
Under other?
Under other.
Dr. Stock, is that, is that?
Yes, she participated the last time, as I recall. The difference here is there were a lot of other health providers besides her there. There were, I started to say podiatrists. I think pediatricians might be a better word. There were a number of other doctors and folks that were there, experts, but I think with Lauren's representation and Melanie and her team, I think we'd have it covered.
Okay, all right. So I'm just trying to establish a timeline for the ad hoc committee, because I don't want it to go out, go on forever. And so when, do you think it's reasonable that we would have a draft in the fall, established in the fall? The next step. So if we had a draft by 9/1, that, that would give the committee?
9/1, I would say no, it's too close to the start of school, and it's going to be chaos getting people going, but.
10/15?
Yeah, October, we could probably have at least a draft.
Okay. Okay, so the committee, so we're looking at an ad hoc committee that would operate between August 1st and October 15th. Member Lessons?
Yeah, having not thought about an exact timeframe, I think that having, having a draft by mid, a draft by mid-October, getting, you know, stakeholder feedback by early to mid-November seems reasonable. And I'd have to look at the school board calendar, but getting, I mean, if we could target to get it through governance by the end, by the second meeting in December, maybe that's too soon. I'm just thinking about in relation to other.
Things, everything.
Other cycles.
Every, okay. So maybe what, what we can do is, I will, I will establish the ad hoc committee today with the timelines to be determined between you and Dr. Stock and myself.
Okay.
And member Jacobs, who is, who has volunteered. We're taking you up on that, member Jacobs. Okay, any other questions on BP 50-40? Good, I'm glad we're moving forward. So if you can give some thought to the dates and the timeline, and we can get together with Dr. Stock and confirm, that would be awesome. And that leads us to item C2, and that is our 22-23 school board meeting calendar. All right, so you can see it's color-coded, the yellow is our school board meeting dates, the joint is the orange, like, our joint. The joint is the orange, like our joint meetings with the assembly. And then we have a couple of tentative dates. What are those tentative, Katie? And actually, Katie, why don't you walk us through the calendar?
The tentative... Joint meeting dates are, have not been confirmed by the assembly. Thank you. The tentative dates have not been confirmed by the assembly because they have not set their calendar for 2023 yet. And so we went through the, the July through December dates have been set by the municipality, and so those ones are solid there. The January through June, we've gone through and offset what we could for like the budget and bond so that board members can attend those. But it's kind of an unknown for their meetings, so we're just doing the best we can to place those.
Thank you, Katie. So you will see that we will have a couple of Monday meetings. We will have Monday meetings in December. We will have Monday meetings in January. One meeting in March, March 20th. And then one on March, I mean, April 3rd. Our joint meetings are, they're all held here in this building. Member Higgins, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple. One, I know that, I think last year, we had a conflict with one of the religious high holy days and all that sort of thing. Has this thing been screened for that? Or do they, do you do that? We used to do that so that we tried to prevent it so everybody could attend, but no.
Through the president, to Member Higgins, the actual school calendar has, but I am not sure that the board has screened this for, for board meetings. But the calendar before you for school, absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then as far as the school board meeting calendar, I know we're still conflicting. We're doing it at the same time as the assembly, which I know has been one of the criticisms some people have that makes it difficult for people to participate as an issue is consideration in regards to, you know, I know that sometimes we get disruptive meetings, we get other kite, but I don't really want to shut people down either from, from being able to voice whatever they want to voice, and that's a little bit of an issue. Is that a consideration or is there a particular reason why that's a concern?
So the board voted probably two years ago now to move its meetings to Tuesday. Part of, part of that is to lessen the impact on staff when they are repairing the reports and getting ready for, getting ready for our meeting. They work all weekend for a Monday meeting to be ready for us on, on Monday. So personally, I can speak, I'm not available on Mondays, but if the board wants to move, change the meetings, we didn't do Wednesdays because that's church night, prayer meeting night, we didn't want to impact that. So I'm not, any other comments? Katie, do you have anything to add to how we got to a Tuesday?
One of the main reasons was the, the work on staff. And we did, we do work to try and offset the meetings with the assembly, offsetting every meeting, trying to predict what they'll be doing for 2023. We did land quite a few on Mondays. So I did move the major ones that were for bond and budget so that those didn't conflict.
Does the assembly meet the second and the fourth?
They're not consistent.
See, we went to the first and third Tuesday because they were on the second and fourth. They have since changed, well, they're not consistent because sometimes they don't have the same pattern of, like we do, or consistency as we do. So that was the intent. The intent really was for us to offset, they were Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesday, and now they can, they can almost, they can meet on a Thursday, but we don't get to know that in advance. So there was consideration given.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not trying to push one or the other, I'm just raising it because I do want the public to be able to have a chance to participate to the degree that they want to.
Absolutely, and that's important as well.
Madam President, I recall through the discussion a couple of years ago, due to the pandemic and the ability of phone-in, although some people like to come in person, both at the assembly and here, allowing for that, that kind of released, just very similar policies on the board that you could be home and still do a board meeting. I think that that also was part of the board's discussion, that the ability to testify was still provided, and that was key via telephone, was one of the things at, at both meetings.
Yeah, and all the meetings are posted, and yeah, so we, so yeah, but that, that's kind of the history of how we tried to go about this. No good deed goes unpunished, so we don't, we can't, hopefully they'll let us know about these other two here so we can...
And Madam President, the very first year that it changed, I think President Agusty was here, and at that time, the assembly did have a pattern, and we adjusted to their pattern. And then the next year was when we found some trouble, and when we asked them, they just said they, they often change them and they, they just, they have different dates and, and for, and different reasons because of their other meetings that they have. So initially, the first year worked beautifully, and then as we moved to the second year, it was all wonky, and that's when we found out they didn't have a pattern. What we had seen, it, they just shared that that was by coincidence.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the explanation because I have been asked that, like in community councils, and what are we going to do in the future? I said we'll look at it, so now I've got an answer for that. And I think anyone else on the, that gets in the community council is asking that question, at least we've got some explanation that we're not trying to avoid them. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Donnelly?
I was looking at November, and there's an in-service day on the 11th. And I was just wondering, is there a reason? I, I know these are in-service days have to meet a certain pattern, that it couldn't be on the 18th.
Oh, that's a calendar committee. Is that, what is that, Veterans Day? No, what is that?
What day is Veterans?
November 11th.
Yeah, it might be Veterans Day.
It says it's a state-released professional development, but it's also...
It's Veterans Day.
11-11.
That is correct. We, we, although adults, our employees work, we do have students off on Veterans Day to celebrate with their families.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions on the calendar? Yeah. We'll give you some time to look at it because, you know, I know some of y'all have to noodle on things.
I do have one other follow-up question.
Yes.
Can you, I want just real quickly, the process for the calendar committee?
That was important. I'm sure that, that will actually, we're gonna, we have a calendar on for, so this calendar was already approved before, so this is a leftover from your prior ones. But we can share that, I don't think he's here, for this general meeting, Andrew Ball, who led that, is able to share that information. We did have it in the Board Connect as well about what we did, but the calendar for one more year is coming up, the year after next year, and then we'd like to pattern that if the board approves the next couple. It did have a few minor changes that we can talk about, but share how it came about.
Other questions?
Did...
Yes, sir.
Did the calendaring committee, do we know if they gave any consideration to Election Day? We have discussed that in the past with all the traffic coming in and out of the schools.
And through the president, to Member Donnelly, and in fact, I think it was a discussion, and I actually consider that a very important day to have students in school. We do have security, we have our security guards, we have our SROs, but for our students, whereby polling places are in their schools, I think it's a very important process of the democratic process that they see voting happening. And so my recommendation was that we continue to have school on voting days so that our students can experience what happens in our community. It was considered. I don't know what the other considerations were, but I shared my opinion, not that this calendar is my opinion, but I stand to believe that we set up schools very well on that day to have students protected.
Madam President, I guess it's just a tradition in my family, we always took the kids with us to vote, so I never thought about, you know, the advantages of exposing students to it, but I do recognize there's an advantage to it. But I've also had parents express security concerns, too.
We have gone through our agenda, the calendar was our last item, before we move into executive Any other comments, questions? Yes.
I guess if we've got some time, I'm, I'm still curious, how many of our schools are not in full compliance with our policy on the Pledge of Allegiance over the public address system?
I knew I shouldn't open the floor, I'm sorry.
I know, you opened it up. You gave me a, you gave me a window of opportunity, I'm taking it.
And the answer's probably going to be the same.
And I, I just don't know the site, I know there's two schools that I've personally gone to and observed it, but with 90 schools in the districts, it's different, difficult to know how much non-compliance there is out there. And I was just wondering, do we know how many other schools aren't doing it?
Through the president, to Member Donnelly, and I think when we discussed it last time, there was a difference of opinion of what the policy spoke to. And because our schools, especially with young children, I think you shared your idea that it was to be on the loudspeaker from the office, and our interpretation is that it should be done and it should be said, the pledge every day. And so many schools with kids, you know, stretching out their calendar with kids coming right away and going to PE or, or wherever, that, and the different classes, that they do have and have the policy and the expectation that it's done every day, it's just not in all schools done as part of the announcements. In fact, in many schools, to increase student learning time, Chugatch Optionals, one of them, that they expect them to be done in the classrooms and they only do announcements once a week, and then the kids come down and it's a production. But generally, announcements will take, you know, 10 minutes or so, could be longer, and they wanted to give the instructional time back to classrooms. So we have, supervisors have supported the Pledge of Allegiance to be done in individual classrooms rather than on the announcements. We could, that was our last discussion of a difference of opinion on what the policy communicated. But really, maybe as we could do a doodle, Google, whatever thing, just to ask, I don't, I don't know, you know, we would just be asking our administrators to share, when is it done, how is it done, things like that. But our expectation is that board policy is followed, and we have building leaders that, that carry that out.
Madam President, when I said policy, I actually was referring to an administrative regulation. Because in the administrative regulation, I think it's clear that it's supposed to be over the public address system. And I kind of consider that board policy, too. It's, it's there, it's in the rules. And when there's administrative regulation, it implies that we don't have to do our own policy. So I would very much appreciate some sort of survey to see how many of the schools are not complying with the administrative regulation.
Sure. And Madam President, with that, we can do that survey, but also that's why it's administrative regulation, to really get feedback from schools who are implementing the policy, and that was a request from them. And so certainly, we could ask them if the board wants to make it a policy, but it would be appropriate, we believe, to adjust that administrative regulation to allow that to happen if, because we have, we have given permission for that to happen for the sole reason, not to avoid saying the pledge, but for the sole reason of recapturing student learning time, especially with the, the young children. So whatever the board's desire is, you can carry this forward if this is part of the governance, but those were the discussions around it. But please note that there is no intention in schools to not say the Pledge of Allegiance, that, that was crystal clear in our direction.
And I completely respect that that might be the position of the administration. The fact is, I went to schools in person, I was there when the pledge was supposed to be by the administrative regulations, said it was not, and I personally observed and listened, and there were classrooms where it was not being said. Because there was no state, school-wide participation, it facilitated individual classrooms not saying that.
So, Member Donnelly, I'm going to recommend that we have this discussion, look at the policy again in governance. It seems perfectly, in my grandson's school, they don't say it publicly, they say it in their classroom. That's how he learned it. He learned it with his schoolmate, with his class, in his class. And so while, I think schools need to have some flexibility on how it's done, it's not a matter of not doing it. So whether that's an adjustment to the AR or whether it's an adjustment to our policy, I, I just think we need to give schools some flexibility to be able to have that important action done within this, at the beginning of the day where it fits within that school structure. I mean, that's just me talking. Member, did you have your hand up, Member Higgins?
Thank you. I'll just say that from administrative regulations, I view that under totally the control of the superintendent, because that's coming from her, so she has that flexibility when it comes to a policy. Only the board can alter the policy, they have to be followed. But administrative regulations allow and should allow the administration to evaluate the appropriateness at different times, since they have the ability to establish it, to, to revise it, eliminate it, under their control. So I think the administration, we have to recognize, falls underneath the superintendent from my perspective.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Okay, and with that, I'm not allowing any more side conversations. Can we adjourn into, I mean, we need to, I need a motion to move into executive session?
Move into executive, motion to move into executive session for the purpose of contracts and legal updates?
Second, somebody?
Second.
A move in second that we enter into executive session for contracts and legal. Is there any opposition? Seeing none?